Ready, sir? Would you all please... Pardon me.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with this hope that liberty and justice are our own.
Thank you, Ms. Lapelis, for that lead in. Today is Monday, October 22nd, 2018. It is our regularly scheduled town council meeting. For roll call, Ms. Aguilar was present at LNA and had a family emergency and had to leave, so she will not be in attendance. Are there any... Mr. Kellogg is present. Are there any comments, changes, or objections to our consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I'll pass the consent calendar. We have Communications A through Q, which I will ask that they be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting this evening. That takes us to the first public participation session. Would anybody like to participate in the public participation at this time? All right, seeing none, I will close our first public participation session. We have six appointments this evening. Mr. Rooney and Ms. Martin are busy this evening. So A is Michael Vitello. Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Vitello on 30 Hearthstone Road to the Board of Police Commissioners for a term ending May 16th, 2021.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Mr. Condon. Discussion, Mr. Rooney.
Michael Vitello has lived in Monroe with his family for 60 years. He is currently a self-employed construction consultant. Mr. Vitello currently serves the town of Monroe on the Economic Development Commission. Prior to EDC, he served on EMS Building Committee, which he still serves. In the past, Mr. Vitello was a member of the Architecture Review Board and worked on EMS Facility Work Group. He's a strong supporter of public safety in Monroe, believes his background along with experience on many boards and commissions, and serves as an asset to the Board of Police Commissioner. This appointment fills the expired term of William Florin.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. I see Mr. Vitello in the audience this evening. I don't know if you want to swear a man at this time, Mr. Kellogg?
Absolutely. It'd be my pleasure.
Mr. Vitello, if you could forward.
Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly, or sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Board of Police Commission to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty appropriate?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Moving on.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, just one quick note. Ms. Aguilar did state that she is in support of all appointments, and just wanted that on the record that she also is in favor of all appointments, and is happy to see all of these spots filled.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Moving on to the second appointment is Barbara Agee to Conservation. Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Barbara Agee, a four-time drive to Conservation and Water Resources Commission, for a term ending December 5th, 2018.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lapelis. Discussion, Mr. Rooney.
Barbara Agee has lived in Monroe for 22 years. She works diligently as one of Monroe's Assistant Town Clerks. Mrs. Agee's love for the outdoors, hiking, and gardening, will make her an enthusiastic candidate. She is looking forward to being an integral part of the Conservation and Water Resources Commission. This appointment fills a vacancy created by Marvin Mars.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. Is Mrs. Agee present this evening, Mr. Rooney?
No, she isn't.
I have not met her, so I wouldn't know. Moving on to C is... You have. You just don't know it.
Okay.
I was going to say he met her 30, 40 years ago.
Why would you do that today?
I didn't know where this was going.
She works in town always. You see it.
Where is this going?
It's going to be that kind of evening.
Thank God it's only Tuesday.
We've had these worse. I have a little bit of ability to...
Don't even go.
Move forward. Yeah.
Jason, you want to sit here?
I'm staying right over there. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the third appointment, Mr. William Florin. Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint William Florin, on 65 Burner Road, to the Economic Development Commission, for a term ending January 31st, 2020.
Motion by Mr. Rooney, second by Ms. Lapelis. Mr. Rooney, discussion?
William Florin has lived in Monroe with his family for 13 years. He has been running a successful business in Monroe since 2009. Mr. Florin has served on the Board of Police Commissioners since 2016. He also volunteers his time as a member of the Monroe Grocery Club and a certified trainer for CERT. Mr. Florin wishes to see Monroe continue to grow economically, and is perfectly suited to aid in that process as a member of the EDC. This appointment fills a vacancy created by Michael Vitello.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Any further discussion? Mr. Mauer.
Just for a point of reference, I know that Mr. Florin's spot on the police commissioners expired. Has Mr. Vitello officially vacated the spot?
He has resigned. He got a resignation letter today.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Florin is here today.
Mr. Florin, if you'd come forward, if you'd like to come forward today. You don't have to.
Give me the nickel.
Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Economic Development Commission to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty appropriate?
I do.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Moving on to our fourth appointment is Krista DeLeo to the Library Board. That's Ms. Martin.
That's mine. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I ask this council to accept the appointment of Krista DeLeo, Democrat, 9 Blueberry Lane, to the Library Board, for a term ending November 30th, 2023.
Motion by Ms. Martin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rooney. Discussion, Ms. Martin.
Krista DeLeo is 11-year resident of the town of Monroe. She's been very supportive of the library and is a frequent user of all library services and programs. Ms. DeLeo comes to us highly recommended by the current board and librarian. Her previous volunteer experiences include co-president Monroe Parents Council, President Monroe Newcomers and Neighbors, Secretary Stepney PTO, and has served as a volunteer for Habitat for Humanity. Ms. DeLeo's work experience is in office management of her family's dental practice, her dedication to the town, and her belief in the Monroe libraries and valuable resource from her residents, and will make her a strong contributor to the library board. And this appointment fills a vacancy created by Erin Tammany.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. Mr. Chairman. Is Mr. Leo present?
She is.
Yes, she is. Mr. Leo, if you'd come forward.
Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Library Board to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty appropriate? Congratulations.
Okay. Our next appointment is Teresa Olear to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask this council to approve the appointment of Teresa Olear, 67 Patterson's Walk, to the Park and Recreation Commission, for a term ending October 21, 2022.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Lapelis. I just want to make sure that the expiration date is correct, because our agenda shows October 22nd. I think you said October 21st.
My sheet says... My sheet says 21st.
All right, so... I don't think... Do we have any objection to the expiration date, whatever it is corresponding to the prior term?
No.
All right. All right. Ms. Martin, discussion?
Continue. Teresa Olear has lived in Monroe for 13 years. She's the mother of five, count them, five children, all of which have participated in our Parks and Recreation Program and sports. Ms. Olear is currently serving as Stepney Elementary PTO co-president. Her history of volunteerism in Monroe includes: Parents Council Representative, Member of Monroe Neighbors and Newcomers, Co-Chair of the Monroe Playground Foundation, Member of the Keller Williams Realty Committee that repainted the town gazebo, Chair of Stepney Elementary School Beautification since 2009, and was part of Monroe's Green Community. Ms. Olear has also participated, volunteered for Penguin Plunge, Sprint for Monroe, Cara's Late 5K, and her dedication to the town, and her familiarity and usage of our Parks and Recreation facilities and programs will make her a strong contributor and a valuable resource for this commission. And this appointment fills the vacancy created by Agastino Madopoli.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any further discussion? Mr. Chairman? Yes, Ms. Mauer.
Over the past year, I've gotten to know Ms. Olear. She has an extreme passion for this town, as well as for any project that I've ever seen her put her mind to. I think she will not only be a great asset to the town and to this committee, but also really see some amazing projects through, so I look forward to seeing what she does on this committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Any further discussion?
Oh, just like they had, that she's already an asset to the town.
Any further discussion? I would like to piggyback on that. We've known Teresa for a while. She's always involved. She puts 100% in. She's doing a great job with the playground. It's... This is a great position for her. Thank you. Anybody else?
What has she done today?
She is.
He's going to hand you a snowball if he doesn't...
All right. Going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
We're talking 5Ks.
And against, motion carries eight to zero. Is Ms. Olear present? Just want to stay consistent. I think maybe future citizen of the year award, possibly, with all of those accolades. Absolutely. I thought we were going to have so much fun. I missed my council members' last meeting.
Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or upon penalty appropriate?
I do.
Congratulations.
All right. Our last appointment is Mr. Michael Clemish to the Fire Services Study Committee to replace Scott Rose. Mr. Rooney? You got me on that one, sir.
This is a town council...
You knew it was coming, didn't you? Yeah, I knew it was coming. I just didn't know when. I didn't think it was going to be that great. May I have a motion to appoint Mr. Clemish to said committee? So moved. Motion by Mr. Mauer, second.
My second.
Ms. Lapelis, discussion? Mr. Kellogg, do you want to say anything about Mr. Clemish?
So, Sheriff, this is, as you will recall, we have a Fire Services Study Committee that was formed by the former for selectmen. We have Mr. Scott Rose, the past chief of the Stepney Fire Department. He has resigned from that position. Still a member of the fire department, but stepped down as chief. Michael Clemish has been elected as his successor as fire chief of Stepney, so I'm hereby appointing Mr. Clemish as a member to replace Mr. Rose on the Fire Services Study Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, motion carries eight to zero. There are no more appointments this evening. We'll move on to our action items, our subcommittee reports. Item A is the Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety. That's Mr. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met since last council.
Item B is Planning and Zoning Public Works in Park and Recreation. That's Ms. Lapelis.
Actually, they didn't have any meetings the last week. Planning and zoning is this Thursday, October 25th. Park and Rec is next Monday, or two Mondays from now, November 5th, and the Conservation and Water is going to be Wednesday, November 7th.
Sounds like we'll have an action-packed report for you all next week. Moving on to C is LNA. That's Mr. Reed.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did meet prior to this meeting tonight, and we will be sharing that on our new business.
Thank you. Strategic Planning, D, Mr. Condon?
Strategic Planning is meeting tomorrow at 4:00.
EMS, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met, but we will be meeting in...
And F is the Fire Services Study Committee. Mr. Condon?
I'll speak. The fire study met on the 11th, and we're scheduled to meet again on the 25th. We are reviewing the draft, and will hopefully soon be accepting it for a vote in the town council.
Thank you. And the last report is Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have your report in front of you. First, the reminder that this is Restaurant Week. I included a flyer that EDC, and I know our council liaison, Mr. Rooney, at EDC was very helpful in coordinating a lot of those efforts. So we have over 25 restaurants participating. I think we're nearing 30 currently. So I encourage everyone to get out there and support our local businesses. The second item is, as you know, you approved the contract for Vision Government Solutions at a prior meeting. We are, through the assessor's office, kicking off a revale project, which is an extremely long-term effort, as you know. The first effort is data collection. This is the component of the full state-required inspection that has to be done once every 10 years. So we will be starting to send out mailings. They don't go to the entire town all at once. They'll be done in geographic areas, depending on where the data collectors will be going out. Data collector will be out weekdays and some Saturdays, most of the day, 9 to 7 p.m. We will have the ability to schedule inspections as well, if desired by the property owner. Everyone will have photo identification. All personnel and vehicles will be registered by, with the Monroe Police Department as well. The revale effort, starting now, the data collection, involves taking measurements that will go towards market valuations for the October 1st, 2019 grant list, so a full year from now, which will be utilized for tax bills that will occur in July of 2020. So this is the first stop of a very significant road ahead of us. Everyone will get notices of the new assessments in late 2019, and there will be meetings that can be scheduled with the individual property owners, and evaluations to discuss those prior to anything being finalized. We have a website up that has more information, and the assessor's office will kind of serve as the revale hotline for any questions, concerns throughout the whole process. Third, I wanted to announce that we have hired Richard Schultz as our town planner. He will start on November 5th. He is currently the Planning and Zoning Administrator in Shelton, a position that he's had for 22 years. Prior to that, he was in North Branford, in a similar position as town planner. So he brings extensive experience, not just from Shelton, where they certainly have experience in developing commercial zones, but also experience in North Branford, working in a smaller community, a community that values its small-town character and wanting to develop in a very responsible fashion. So he will, again, have full oversight of the coordinating, the land use process, improving customer service, and implementing technology. As you know, for the budget process, this position, and through the job description updates, you know that this position will have oversight of the planning and zoning, inland wetlands, building, and engineering departments. And last but not least, just a note on our local news coverage. I think we're all saddened by the loss of the courier. We wish those employees all the best. I have reached out to... Well, we've done, after some research, the town, of course, has to publish legal notices. Those legal notices will be published in voices going forward. It was the most cost-effective solution. It also will have more circulation. After my conversations with the ownership there, more circulation locally than the kind of post currently has in Monroe. They have committed to substantial increase in circulation, and are also having very good conversations about them providing more coverage of Monroe. Obviously, it's something that they need to work towards. I believe they are hiring staff in that regard as well. So that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. We have no unfinished business this evening. There are three items of new business. The first item is Item A, the St. Jude License Agreement. Ms. Lapelis, your motion?
Yep. I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding St. Jude License Agreement for Parks and Rec Programs and Move for Its Adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe the license agreement and any associated documents by and between, say, Jude Grom and Catholic Church Corporation for Parks and Recreation Programs.
Thank you, Ms. Lapelis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. For discussion, I will turn the floor over to you, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've discussed in the past, the town has a history of utilizing the gymnasium and some other space at St. Jude, a former St. Jude school. In speaking with the new leadership at St. Jude, as well as my desire would be to formalize that arrangement in writing. We've had extensive conversations in terms of kind of rightsizing our needs there, as well as some of the terms and conditions that we had to discuss with St. Jude. For reference, the costs that we have been paying, St. Jude recognized that they would not be able to continue to offer based upon their assessment of the space and their costs, et cetera. The cost would have been substantially higher going forward. I've worked really closely with Ms. Oroz, our acting director of Parks and Rec, to right-size our request for the amount of space that we had available there, focusing really on the gymnasium and a couple weeks of summer fun days. And essentially, we've brought that cost back. The cost of this contract of $18,800 is similar to what our experience was prior, and is still within the same range that we cover through our program fees through the basketball program. So we are looking to continue to utilize this space so that we can continue to offer those programs, and ask that you consider it to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion?
This was voted at LNA, and we did reach a consensus to bring it to council.
We also have attached to our submission in the agenda is the opinion letter from our town attorney, who's also reviewed the agreement.
And I, if I may, would like, in addition to acknowledging this, I want to acknowledge our town attorney, Mr. Hayden, who was very helpful in working directly with the legal department from the diocese that was very involved, and there was a lot of work that had to go into, making sure that we were providing the requisite amount of background checks and safe environment types of things that they require, what recognizing it is in municipal use, and we have to balance that accordingly. So I appreciate his help in negotiating that as well.
Any further discussion? Ms. Martin?
St. Jude is tax-exempt.
Correct.
And that's... Our payment to them is income to them. Does that... Is there any issue with that?
No, I mean, let our town attorney answer that from the legal perspective, but I don't see any... No more... I mean, we collect fees for things all the time as a municipality, and we're tax-exempt. It's whether or not you're generating a profit versus covering costs.
Is that... That was part of your negotiating?
Well, generally, not exactly, because the... Whether it's tax-exempt, or whether it's income, or whether it's just to cover their operating expenses, that really frankly isn't generally our concern, in terms of what, how they're operating, and how they're going to apply their funds. I would tend to agree with Mr. Kellogg, without having inquired, that it covers their operating expenses, but I can't... I can't opine as to what they do with that money.
That's not a concern from our side.
Nope. It's not a concern from our side. Absolutely not, nope.
All right. That's all I know.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
The only thing I'll just reference is that there was a very colorful discussion in LNA about this agreement, and...
Colorful?
Colorful in that there was many questions presented about the balancing the necessity for an expenditure in the securing contractually for consideration this space in St. Jude, and how that lines up with the use of our current school facilities, such as Jockey Hollow and Massacre in Monroe, Elan, and Lea. So the discussion was that we have five schools, and certainly Chuck Hill's gone offline, but, you know, could these programs have been... Could those schools have been utilized more to potentially impact the need for St. Jude? And I think, I'm not speaking for Mr. Kellogg, but I think he's committed to investigating this with Ms. Oroz and the Board of Ed, just so that in the future, we have a little bit more data as to whether or not we're utilizing our town facilities to their maximum. So that was the colorful discussion, and there wasn't enough data, but I'm hoping that we'll have a report in the next couple of weeks. And speaking for Mr. Reed, he had a very good idea about maybe developing some type of committee and/or having LNA look at it further, well in advance of this having to happen next year, so we can get a better grip on where those things stand. Is that a fair...
That's a very fair assessment. We're looking to actually start this process officially in LNA next meeting, so two weeks.
Will Park and Rec be included in it?
Board of Ed, Park and Rec Facilities, Athletic Directors.
Basically trying to, as you may recall, Ms. Martin, since you're senior to me, but we've had this discussion numerous times about having and sharing collaboration between the Board of Ed and the town, so that we can be certain that we are utilizing our space to its fullest capacity.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. So, Mr. Mauer, sorry.
I noticed that now that we've brought up the idea that we may be researching into other avenues, there's no... These not that I saw, there's no contractual terms as to termination. If we were to find that we have facilities that we could use, is there an ability to terminate?
No, not within... But it's only... The term is only one year.
Okay.
It's a very short term.
Just to be clear, the contemplation through LNA and our... Part of our colorful discussion was that we believe that this investigation and/or compilation of data would be helpful in future planning, not the present. By no means we're looking to change what's currently happening.
Okay.
But it's a good question.
And, if I may...
Sure.
And for the record, our Parks and Rec Department did inquire as to availability of school. We do utilize quite a lot of the school space already. This is, you know, the St. Jude has historically been for additional space beyond what was available. The question is whether or not we want to have more detailed-level discussions and maybe policy discussions with Board of Ed relative to how that space is allocated, and just kind of take another fresh look at it.
Again, for the record, I did have a conversation with the chairman of the Board of Ed as the chairman of town council, and asked that they look into this issue specifically from a policy perspective, so that we can ensure that this issue is at least properly vetted in the future. I'm not saying it wasn't properly vetted at all, but I think that we just are trying to ensure that our policies on the town side kind of mesh with the policies on the Board of Ed side. You know, this kind of spurn that there may be some space being rented to other organizations above and beyond and before those spaces are being offered to the town on the Board of Ed side. And it could be a lack of just meshing policies to be sure, and it may just be that if it's not sufficient, but we don't know, and we didn't have that data. So that's kind of what we're looking into.
All right. So any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Against, motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hayden, for that. B is our 2018 EM PG Performance Grant Application and Resolution. Ms. Lapelis?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding FFY 2018 Emergency Management and Parks Grant Program Application and Move for Its Adoption. Resolved that the town of Monroe may enter into, with and deliver to the state of Connecticut, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate pertaining to the 2018 State Homeland Security Region One Grant. And further resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, as first selectman of the town of Monroe, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Monroe and to do and perform all acts and things which it deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Thank you, Ms. Lepelis. Motion by Ms. Lepelis, second by Mr. Condon. Just to open up discussion, this was discussed in LNA in advance, and although this is an agreement that typically would find its way on our consent calendar pursuant to our new procedures, Mr. Kellogg did make it clear to LNA that this had been historically on the actual new business agenda, on the Town Council agenda, so he felt it better to continue with that process. It's fairly self-explanatory. We do see it on an annual basis. I don't know if we need any formal introduction. If anybody has any questions, please.
How many years have we had this?
Ms. Martin?
Ten? More than ten?
I mean, I wouldn't want to be held to a specific number without researching it, but it's, this is a longstanding grant.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, that motion carries eight to zero. Before we move on to the last item, just on behalf of Ms. Aguilera, I just wanted to, on the consent calendar, you had the DUI enforcement program, and it was discussed in LNA. I just want to ask the chief, why is here? Chief, Ms. Aguilera, just wanted to know if this grant covered an entire fiscal period? It seems like it's a one-year grant.
The DUI grant does. It only runs for two days, but two specific time periods.
Right. So it appeared to us that the DUI, just from reading it, was one year. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. November meeting schedule. This is on our agenda. Our next meeting is scheduled for Veterans Day, so I won't blame any of my colleagues for that scheduling, snafu, but we would like to consider moving that meeting up to November 5th so as not to have to meet on Veterans Day when we wouldn't have the ability to have the facility anyway. So we're moving up that meeting, and I just wanted everybody's opinion on their availability. Make sure we have a quorum, of course, and do it publicly. So the meeting would not be the 12th. It would be November 5th. And the subsequent meeting would be, I think it's the Monday after the Thanksgiving holiday, which forces our hand on the agenda, but it's probably not a bad thing. Any objections to that?
I have an engagement, but I can move it around, I think.
So let's just vote on it to make it official. Do I have a motion to amend our schedule from the November 12th, 18, to November 5th, 18?
Motion.
Mr. Reed, second by Mr. Condon. Any more discussion on this really interesting topic?
No.
All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, eight to zero. Second public participation. Would anybody like to participate in this second public participation session? Seeing none, I'll close. Second public participation. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Lepelis, second by Mr. Mauer. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Motion carries eight to zero. I saw you move your hand.